My name's Dan Carney. It is, once again, my distinct privilege to be serving as the chairman of this board for a call meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College today, Thursday, August the 7th, 2025, beginning at 12:30 PM in the Community Room in the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas. Consider and act upon a post agenda in deliberations here with me today is Vice Chairman Doug Dowd, Ms. Mary Beth Denny, Mr. Dr. Trev Dixon, our beloved Secretary Lila Morris, GB Bailey as well. I do call this meeting to order at this time, and I call upon Mr. Baker. Would you find this looking invocation?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Please bow with us. Lord, as we look at next year's budget, we thank you so much for the blessings you've given this college and how you provided for this college, how you continue to bring students. We thank you for our board, and please be with them as they deliberate. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Grant. Those who are able, please rise and join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the post agenda is public comment for individuals who were not on the agenda. I've already made inquiry and determined that no one has signed up to speak under agenda item number two today. Item number three is our birth budget workshop. And Dr. Cantrell, the floor is yours, madam.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate this opportunity to come before you all today and present the 2526 budget for your review. We had sent in your package, I think, the summary of the budget and the budget itself. And then today we plan to present a PowerPoint. Anyone wishing to have a copy of that PowerPoint, if you'll let us know after the board meeting, we'd be glad to provide that. The summary here is very high level, and that's what we really plan to speak on today, the high level, the big dollars. And looking at it, and I just want to thank everyone here at the college for their participation in the preparation of this budget. This budget starts in November, the prior year, every year, with the estimation, looking at revenues for the coming year. We start our preparation, and then about March and April, all the requests start coming in from everyone across campus to their division directors, and then it going to the deans and then to the vice presidents for our final recommendation before we submit a preliminary budget to you all in June. At this time, there's continually, and I won't say this always has happened over the many years that I've been here, but we are continually amending budgets now for all the activities. It used to be where we received an appropriated dollar from the state for two years. We can't even get a total appropriation for one year now, the way they're doing it down in Austin. So moving forward, I would like to tell you all that the Weatherford College were presenting a proposed budget for the 2025 year on August the 7th today that is balanced at this point in an amount of 99 million, 99,223,253 dollars. The revenues and expenditures both totaled the same. Basically, this budget was developed in the support of the Weatherford College mission and the statement of strategic goals which have been adopted by you all. This is a summary page, and it gives the line items, the categories that are allowed by the state that go in at the end of the year and are basically audited by these line items. When we get started, you can refer to this summary page in your package if you don't mind, and then we'll go on to the different pages. I'd like to get started with the revenue line items. And basically, when you look at that first schedule, the revenue sources and the difference between the years, that you can see what line items have gone way up and over the years. Basically, our state appropriations are pretty static at this point. We, when you look at the main three sources of revenue for the college, which are tuition and fees, appropriations, and taxes, you'll look at the areas here that have risen greatly. The most recent formula funding model for the community college appropriations for this coming year shows the amount of 10,777,260 dollars. That's a, right now, with the first run, 251,822 dollars are the new dollars that have been obligated to us at this point. We haven't received all the final performance fund money and all the fast money. There's all these different types that are reviewed during the year that we may receive additional funds. An increase in 1,125,000 is in student aid is primarily due to the increase in Pell, S E O G, and the Stafford loans here at the college. Our Pell funds are right at 800,000 increase. S E O G is flat. College work-study, it's 125,000 dollar increase is what we're looking at for this coming year. And then the Stafford loans are basically 200,000 dollars total. We currently are showing a decrease of 811,990 dollars in operating grants due to reduction in grant funding from the prior year shows. But right now, that is what we have been awarded. People are still filing for new grants right now, so there will be additional grants hopefully coming through all year long to fund some of the different programs and activities that we're doing here on this campus. We have a net increase of 1,832,519 dollars in tuition and fees is what it's showing here. As we all know, there were no tuition and fees that were, we were allowed to pass on as new fees for this coming year from the state. We received orders from the state. But last fall, the new student center fee, our union fee, was adopted, which we started collecting in January of last year. So that made it necessary to go ahead and amend for the additional funds that we received in the spring and the summer. So we're collecting basically 1,558,000 dollars more because of the student center fees and the tuition and fees. And that is a net fee because I think we had 2,666,000, but we have waivers that are coming off of some of the tuition fees that would net that. Then we go in and look at the major changes, other major changes to revenue that we have, and are there any questions on the tuition and fee dollars? Because in prior years, we had increased our rates of our fees, and we did not do that because of those governors this year. Our local tax revenue has increased to, is it being proposed to increase to 1,563,000 dollars over the 2425 year? Wait just a moment, and then I'll come back to that and explain the details on that. We had local funds, other increased by 1,017,68. There was a, primarily due to the increase in interest income and the additional dollars that we had on deposit that we were able to keep on deposit all year long until we finalized some projects going out. And next year, we will be receiving, and this is not all in here, we'll be adding an amendment later, once we receive the funding on the new revenue bond that won't pass until September. And at that time, we'll be coming back and amending this figure for the investment of those dollars that we will allocate out during the two-year period, since there's 100 million dollars there that will be basically put into some sort of investment activity during the time. Our auxiliary services have increased by 484,747, basically due to 350,000 food service expenses. And then our dormitories, Cow Village has gone up 101,176, and Durant Hall, 3,480 over last year. I think roughly this time, we're pretty full. They might not write scott on that, on our dormitories and looking at for the coming year. So this is good 454,000 in new dollars there. Golf course revenue has increased by 37,740 for our total budget for this coming year, budgeted at 2,288,999 dollars. Debt services revenues actually for this coming year have decreased by 19,000, and that was due to, in the debt service area, a decrease in investment interest income because we paid off that old GO bond, I believe, and we didn't have any money coming in this last year. So our budget itself has been decreased. And no non-mandatory transfers are being shown this time as far as total revenues. And going back and looking more in detail on your tuition and fees, we've estimated tuition and fee totals coming in at 25,196,135 dollars. And I, as I said earlier, that represents 36% of the three major sources of revenue, including state appropriations, tuition and fees, and local tax dollars. I believe our taxes are coming in right at 49%, and appropriations, 15%. Estimated tuition and fees have increased by net 1,832,000 due to the student center fee that was adopted last fall to be effective this last spring, as I prefer to. Are there questions about tuition and fees? We've had growth in our enrollments that's reflected there also. So what we increased that 1,800,000, the 2,666 from the fees, I believe, the rest of it was in enrollment estimates, I believe. Local property and maintenance taxes. Let me pull one sheet here out that I like to refer to. The 2025 total taxable value certified on July the 22nd was 30,630, 30 billion. I have a hard time switching over billions and millions, and I'm not going to go like the United States and go to the trillions because it'd be even harder. These values include the frozen values of over 65 homesteads, a 5,626,686 and 33 dollars, and then the new construction taxable values of 1,155,127,730. 2025 frozen levy will be 4,415,102 dollars. All of that goes into a total adjustment. When looking at this, you look at your total certified values, your taxable, and reduce that by your taxable values. You have to take out a pollution control exemption, a total tax value then comes in at 25,010,587 dollars. New improvements came out at 1,155,127,730, and this is all to come down to an adjusted taxable value of 23,855,460,062 dollars to come up with your no new revenue rates that the tax office gives us, or the worksheet we have to do really now, and in the past they had completed. But they do check those for us, and they are, we have to put those on our websites now to be fully, that everyone can see these, fully transparent on these. So this year, our tax rate was .106087. The no new revenue tax rate figured is .101436. And then you have a voter, a VA tax rate or voter approval rate of .110234, and that's saying if you go above that rate, you have to go for voter approval, or the voter approval can freeze those and come back in to. So when looking at that, we go back and we analyze what our need for this coming year is. And looking at that, your no new revenue rate would produce total tax levy of 29,519,842 dollars. That no, the VA tax rate would be 31,720,273 dollars, so virtually 2 million, 3 million dollars, no, 2 million dollars difference right there. We came back, and we're recommending today that we go back and recommend a 4.585 above that no new revenue rate, and that's it, keeping the rate the same. It's gone up greatly, or it would go down if we look at that no new revenue rate has gone down from where we were this last year. But we're recommending that we keep it at the same rate. We do not increase the rate, but it would be at the .106087. Our tax levy would be the 26,532,942 dollars plus your 4,150 in frozen taxes for our total tax levy of 30,683,044. The tax revenue currently that we're showing in the budget is 29,703,000. And so additional revenue that could be generated by the rate would be 366,000 dollars. Is that right? Please, I'm getting that figured. Are there questions on that? And this will be, if you all want a copy of this, there's more detail in there that you might want to put in your mind on that no new revenue rate and the VA rate. We're going above the no new revenue rate, which is the same amount of money that we would be, same rate for the new monies that we're receiving, would be receiving this year, cannot exceed that rate without voting to increase it to the .106087. But the VA rate is what you can't go above. Are you're subject to? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Simply put, the tax rate is remaining the same.
Yes, I mean, that's what we're recommending at this time.
It's increasing because taxable values have increased.
Yes, absolutely. More simply said. Thank you. Any other questions on that? Just gives you an idea of where we've been on taxable value trends in the last 10 years. And of course, they've gone up, 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 but our tax rates have remained pretty static along those 10 years. This shows right now, the Weatherford College, the historical tax rate comparison to the state average, and I think this goes back to 2006. And at this point in time, this last fall, we were at that same that we're recommending today, the 10609, .10609. And the state average is at .16060. So we're well below the state average, as you can see from the blue line with the state average down to what we're actually collecting, and we're recommending to stay the same. We currently, on the next page, it shows you that based on this last year, we're out of 48 community colleges that responded, we set number 38 in the lowest tax rate, I On the Wise County branch maintenance tax, their total taxable value certified on July the 22nd is the 15,708,469. And this represents a 9% increase. I think we were at 10.23 in Parker County. So this represents a 1,3265,000 dollar increase over the 2024 certified taxable value of last year of 14,408,204,338. Is that correct? At this time, we've been asked to not adjust that until the county reviews that locally because they are the ones that actually assess that rate to fulfill their budget. And so we built that in as a flat budget at this time. So we budgeted the 4,600,000 just as we did last year. The major changes in expenditures have been in, we've listened to the board, and our strategic goals for the college were adopted, and we have tried to hold steady to this in where we placed our new dollars. We talked about our strategic goals, our personnel compensation, academic instruction, technology, and facilities, and that's what we've worked very hard to do. Our salary increases for raises are totaling approximately 1,506,699 dollars for this coming year. We have an additional 450,000 dollars have been allocated for adjunct and overload raises, rate increases to be sure and be competitive with our other colleges and people that we compete for with adjunct salaries. Our major repairs and renovations have we budgeted, it was the same as we did last year, at this time, 3,750,000. We've probably, we've had a multiple number of needs across the campus, but we've gone back and reviewed those. We prioritize those, work very hard. We're not always able to achieve all of them, but we've put the top ones, and those will be the ones that are addressed first during this coming year. And right now, we've already got projects starting, but that's, there will be 3,750,000 placed in the budget for those. And those are for things to come up during the year too. I mean, so we have to keep a reserve aside for that, that air conditioning going, air purifiers going out, there's different items like that that come up all the time. We're looking at the few weeks with the enrollment increase that we've got, our parking lots ready. And so I think we've got the parking lot behind Durant Hall, and every time we bring in loads of rock to spread across there, we can look at, say, 25 loads of those coming in, it becomes quite costly right at the last minute a lot of times. So we have to have that ability to draw from that major repair renovation line item. Our utilities, we've increased them by 362,500, and our Wise County, Wise County lease increased up by bonding requirements, 62,250 dollars this year. Oh, did I miss a page? I'm sorry. Yeah, I did. Sorry. That's why I'm having Lisa do the screenshots because I get busy talking. Our supplies increased by 74,589 for a total in supplies of 1,662,898 dollars. Travel decreased by 75,000 for a total of 834,000. Equipment decreased for the coming year by 584,000. And as I told Dr. Farmer, I believe that's basically the new bus that we bought this last year that we don't have in there again this year. So we basically budgeted a flat budget there. Technology service budget increased by 39,870 dollars for a total of 4,244,394. Also, would like to point out with our technology department, that was one of the focuses of the rating companies coming in this time to look at the risks that were associated with bonding this project. They were very impressed with the work that's been done in cybersecurity here at the college, and I had Frisilla to come today in case there were any questions that we might have about what we do with that technology service budget. But we have worked very hard the last two years to bring us up to the requirements from the state and beyond. Any questions there? Our operating grants, as I told you earlier, have, appear to have decreased this time by 80. by $811,000. But I know already, we have several awards that we're waiting to hear from right now that will hopefully be coming in and will amend that at a later date. Our performing scholarships increased by $236,756. One of the things, I believe, we've added the dance team for this coming year. We've added scholarships to baseball because of requirements. And then rodeo, we went ahead and brought 10 more scholarships on for them since he is, the rodeo team does have men's and women's, and we're far behind being equal in that area, but we're working towards it. So we added two more, I believe, for the women's at this point. And for a total, a student, a total of three men, $20,693 will be budget, have been budgeted this time for performing scholarships. Our auxiliary enterprise expenditures increased by $903,557 due to increases in food service and housing. I think the cafeteria increased there under expenses, $220,221. Kaio Village has, we have an increase there of $288,792, and Durant Hall, $81,000. And there are just some, we go ahead and put our major renovation dollars in those individual auxiliary fund accounts instead of putting it in our general operating, general fund, major rehabs. So those are, Scott, if you wanted to address any of those, the Kaio Village and the Durant Hall, the major needs there for this coming year.
With Durant Hall, we're figuring out more and more what, because it's a new building, what it needs, what it doesn't need. Kaio Village is, is getting old, it's over 20 years old, and it's time to start working on some serious renovations within the interior and exterior of the building over the next several years. So we had to increase the budget there for taking care of those issues.
And then moving, is there any questions there? Utilities increased, as I said, $362,500 in that Wise County, Wise County again for Are there any specific questions? So we're ahead of time, but I didn't know exactly how detailed you all wanted to go in certain areas. But this is a pretty high level, but I'll be more than willing to address those. I just wanted to know and stress again, we have worked very hard, the whole college, when I look at all the VPs sitting along here and what our marching orders are at the beginning and end of a year, it's, I believe we have a very fair process and we work, I try not to get into the areas of trying to say what the academic people need or what the student services need, but then we try to mesh it all together to affordable price that we can ask the taxpayers to fund.
Are there some major renovations planned for Kaio Village, you think, this year?
Yes, we will be doing, we're starting with one, one building in Kaio Village, there's essentially four buildings. And building two is what we would focus on first of all, as far as that's concerned.
And what we plan to do is, and anything this last year that we were trying to replace with beds, or if we had to go ahead and replace anything, we're trying to match the Durant Hall, things that they have over there and be similar. It won't be a new building, but the roofs in the old ones are larger, so some people do like that better. There are, sometimes they'll have a desire to be in that older building because of the size of the roofs. So, but we want a new paint and to refresh them and to get them to be, I think when we went ahead and added the roof over to this Kaio Village, it did a lot to just bring up the base of the dormitories.
Another question I had is, when it comes to like success point funding that we get, does that show up in the state appropriations?
Yes.
Is that where that comes in?
When I amend that, when we get the final figures on that, I amend those. Actually, it does. It goes into a total.
Yep.
Reparation dollar.
How does that come in? Is it once a year that we get that?
Where's all the quarterly?
It's quarterly.
More of a quarterly.
But it's on a look-back basis, I guess.
Well, and they've changed it somewhat. Yes, it is appropriated dollars from the prior year for your base needs and then your contact hours. But then they start, we're looking at those performance funding. Adam would probably be a good person, if not in here.
I can, I can answer that. And so with the performance funding, it is for any institutional award, associate degree or bachelor's degrees. We get additional performance funding for transfer to universities. I've once again asked TAC to consider transfer from our associate degrees to our bachelor's degrees. We, I'm trying to get funding for that as well.
Yep.
And, but we get additional funds for our academically underserved students, you know, those that need developmental education. If they're financially insecure, there's additional funding for that. And then students that are over the age of 25.
Okay.
And so that is, that works very well in our workforce programs where we have a lot of returning adults.
Can you just explain for everybody, the debt service of $10 million, where does that go to pay for?
Okay, we have series, four areas we had, well, we will have by payment for the end of this year. Three revenue bonds. And those three revenue bonds are the 2022 revenue bond, which we built the Durant Hall. The 2021 revenue bond was for the workforce building. And then the 2012 revenue bond is for the payment of our 20, that one's paid off. I've got on my schedule here, I'm looking over.
Was 2012 for Kaio Village?
Right, it was the old, the original on the Kaio Village, but it was paid off regular. So it was showing here, but it's, it's paid off now.
No.
No, it's not either. I'm sorry, I just asked for this right before we walked out. For this coming year, fiscal year, $548,000 on the revenue on the Kaio Village is $548,600. We have payment on that. For the 2025, $1,245,750 of payment on the workforce, no, that's Durant Hall. The 21 is the workforce, $1,492. And then the maintenance tax note that we still owe money on is a total of $235,838. And Lisa, on that coming year.
The 10 million will include the payment for the new building here.
Yep.
So we'll have a total payment of $10 million.
Sure, it's all revenue.
Right. Well, yes.
Will be.
I forgot about the old Kaio Village that we have a small amount left on. Yes, sir.
Can you tell me of the 25 million tuition and fees, how that breaks down, tuition versus fees? Is that possible?
Just a second, let me think, just a second, help there. Go back to.
Because when I went to college, you paid a lot of tuition and no fees. And the world has changed where you pay almost.
I see what you're saying now.
So you do tuition, I was just curious how.
I don't have a breakdown.
I don't have it.
I don't have that. Can I get that for you and get it to you exactly as a breakdown on that? And, because I did not bring that with me.
Andrew, I was wondering what you tell parents and students when they ask you what the student center is?
Well, that's usually the job of the, of student services.
We're telling, we're building this great big building.
But you started charging it before that building is being built.
Well, it was for the building.
And I shouldn't say you.
And getting ready. And we realized it was, it's a general for the student services, but we already have counseling, we have all those things, and it's a melting pot to help pay for, too. It's not just for, but it was recommended that we charge a fee for all of our student services that we have out there. We don't charge the Wise County campus because they have their own campus, and we don't charge the dual credit students on that. But anyone here is involved, if they have an opportunity to go to the cafeteria service, the counseling services, everything we have, the cafeteria, the games, the, what all will be in there.
Well, it would be advising and financial aid.
It's even charged to online students?
Online students.
Because they're counseled and they also are involved in the financial aid. And this was something that the financial advisors that we had, was recommended to them, a possible fee like this to help offset this bond, this revenue bond of this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I will get that, a whole breakdown for that on you.
Just a quick comment, more than, more than a question, because I know we need to wrap this up. But the major change in expenses with regard to salaries, that's in keeping with our philosophy of trying to attract and keep the best that we can get here for the school. And you made a comment about the adjunct professors as well, and the increase of $450,000 for them. Same philosophy, because we can kind of get more bang for our buck if we can get good, qualified adjuncts.
Yes.
For less money than what we have to spend for.
And also, we're competing with a lot more out there.
Exactly.
We're pulling from different words and different areas to come in here and try to, but it's that, our bang for our buck's very good out of those, so we've worked very hard to raise them to a comparable level to other colleges.
Well, as I said, it was more a comment than a question, and so I'll let you wrap it up.
Okay. With all this said and done, I think we've done an outstanding job, and I think it's a conservative still, because as you can see, we've got expenditures, if you can see it all, we've had expenditure requests that far exceed, exceed the budgeted revenue that's we're recommending. But we have gone back and we've analyzed the good for the college, the good for the taxpayer, and all those involved in presenting Weatherford College as an outstanding, not just a community college anymore, but that offers four-year bachelor degrees also.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cantrell.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. I believe President Farmer, unless I'm erroneous, we're down to the agenda item number four. We don't have any item, any action items under number four, number five, or number six at this time, do we?
That is correct, no action needed.
Okay. So for purposes of this workshop call meeting, I think we're down to the point of adjournment because we're going to start another meeting here in about 20 minutes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And is there a second? And all in favor, it's unanimous.